Wow.
Good evening. Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Curry County's Zoom Candidate Forum for Brookings City Council. I am Georgia Nalan, tonight's moderator. I'd like to introduce our Voter Service co-chairs Charlie Alexander and Mary Jane LaBelle. Mary Jane will be co-hosting the Zoom along with League member Colleen Bun. Charlie will be our timer. This is the second of four forums that will be recorded and available on channel 182, CurrieCountyVoices.com, LWVCurry.org, and Vote411.org via YouTube. This broadcast of the October 6, 2020 League Candidate Forum are for the candidates running for Brookings City Council and has been furnished as a public service by the League of Women Voters of Curry County. Any reproduction, recording, transcript, or other use of this program without written permission is prohibited. Let me begin with the League of Women Voters' mission statement. The League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan political organization, encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League does not support or oppose candidates running for elected office. Any voting person can be a member of the League of Women Voters. We have both men and women members and invite you to join. Because of COVID-19, this is a virtual candidate forum, a first for the League of Women Voters of Curry County. Our thanks to Paul Addis of Coos Bay Library and a fellow community website partner of mine for his assistance with Zoom. Candidates tonight are for Brookings City Council Position Number One, Brad Alcorn and Anthony Bond. Brookings City Council Position Number Two, Diana Cooper and Ed Schreiber. All candidates running for these contested positions have been invited to this forum. Here are some ground rules for tonight's forum. Unless you are asked to speak, please keep yourself on mute. Candidates will be asked to speak in rotating order. Initial speakers have been determined by verbal number drawing. Each candidate will be given three minutes for their opening statement. Once that portion is completed, we will go to the question and answer section of the forum. Questions have been collected from the public and League members prior to the forum. You will have one and a half minutes to respond. Our timer, Charlie, will have Mary Jane put up the 30-second sign on the screen when you have 30 seconds left. When your time is up, a stop sign will come on the screen. Candidates, can you see the signs? Okay, great, thank you. I will now introduce the candidates. Candidate for Brookings City Council Position Number One, Brad Alcorn. You need to take yourself off mute, Brad.
Georgia, do you want Brad to speak now, give his three-minute statement?
Yes.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
All right. Well, good evening. My name is Brad Alcorn. I'm from Fresno, California, and I am currently the Brookings City Council Member in Position One. I'll tell you a little bit about myself first. I am married to Jennifer Alcorn. Jennifer is the Executive Director for the South Coast Humane Society. She's the lady that you see in all the dog videos if you follow them. Jennifer and I have been married, we've been married for about almost 30 years now. We have three kids, one still lives in California. We have a daughter who lives here in Brookings, and I have a son who lives in Gold Beach, and he is currently a Curry County Sheriff's Deputy. I spent 35 years with the Fresno Police Department. There I worked positions on the SWAT team, as a canine handler, and as a homicide detective. My wife was a professional boxer, for those of you that didn't know. She's a three-time undefeated lightweight champion of the world, and I also managed and trained her. I retired in 2017. We bought our house here in Brookings in 2013, and this was the place that I wanted to retire. We moved here, and I took a couple of years to decompress, and then I started to think about how I could be an asset to the community. And the first thing I did was I got on the City of Brookings Parks and Recreation Committee, and I learned a lot about city government through that process. The next thing that I did was I got on the Curry County Budget Commission, where I am currently the Chair of the Budget Commission. What a learning process that was, and still continues to be. Through that process, I also started to volunteer with Curry County Sheriff's Department, where I am currently the Canine Coordinator. I volunteer my services two nights a week, where I teach tactics, I train dogs, and do everything related to the Sheriff's Department Canine Program. In April, I was asked by the mayor to fill a vacancy and be appointed to the City Council position due to an illness that one of the council members had. The council voted unanimously to appoint me to that position, and I am in that position now. I initially had no plans on running for office until some of the national issues came up with law enforcement, the George Floyd incident, et cetera, and several members of the community reached out to me, and they asked me to run for office, they asked me to run for this position, and that's why I'm running, and that's why I'm here today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anthony? You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Bond, and I'm currently running against Brad Alcorn for Position One on the City Council. Most of my background involves military and the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, which I retired from in 2018. I spent a period of time in the United States Marine Corps as a tow gunner, including Operation Desert Storm. I have four children, all of which are in the military, actually one of which just got out of the Navy and is now residing in Ohio with her new husband. Basically, I'm running for City Council mostly because I became upset with the city processes that were involved. Actually, Brad and I have many of the same views in regards to how the council operates and things of that nature. But I'm running in regards to some personal issues that I've had with the homeless and personal issues with response of the city to some of the projects that they have undertaken that have involved my home and actually many of my other friends. So for those reasons, the reasons why I was running for City Council was to actually do something about that. That's honestly, that's about it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now for the candidates for Brookings City Council Position Number Two, Diana Cooper. Your turn, three minutes.
Okay. So, my name is Diana Cooper. I'm running for City Council Position Number Two. I was born here in Brookings on Pine Street and grew up here. Moved away, I think in 2013, I moved over to Jackson County. I struggled a lot with some addiction and homelessness issues here for many years, and I moved to Jackson County where they had more services, and I was able to get into some programs there. And through the programs over there, I became involved in advocacy work and street outreach for the homeless, as well as my introduction to the city. In Medford, was on the Jackson County Homeless Task Force for several years, and that's kind of where I got my introduction to City Council and how policies and ordinances are created and how they affect the community and the populations that I work with. So that was my original introduction. I started working for the Rogue Valley YMCA over there several years ago. I worked there up until right before I moved over here last year, and I had a lot of experience there with volunteerism. The YMCA is really big on volunteering. And I also, at the same time, started working at All Care Health, one of the local CCOs that manages Oregon Ten Dollars. And mostly, I learned a lot there about how Medicaid works, how Medicare works, how they interact, and just kind of how some of those decisions are made on a state level. And then I also worked for a period of time at the Family Nurturing Center. I was on the Board of Directors for the Family Nurturing Center, and then I began working there, helping with the farm program for parents who have a struggle with addiction and are involved in the child welfare system. So I had a lot of interaction with child welfare and DHS as a whole, and how their policies work and how their programs affected my clients. I moved, we moved back over here. I'm married to Matt Cooper. He's a home care worker here in town. He's also going to be a community health worker in the next month. And we were married in 2007. We met in high school, and we've been together ever since. We have four kids. Ada is 13, and I just turned 11. Tad is nine, and Noah is seven, so they're quite a handful. We moved back over here last year in July. Matt moved ahead of me and got work over here, and then I moved over, and I didn't really intend on going to work for a little while. I just graduated college and just left both of my jobs at the Y and All Care, and I kind of needed a reprieve. And so I stopped working for a little while, and then COVID hit, and that was my motivation to... It looks like I'm probably about done. Anyway, that was my motivation to go back to work, and that's where I'm at now.
Okay, thank you. Ed Schreiber, also from Position Number Two.
Thanks. Yes, a little bio for me. I was born in Long Beach, California. I was raised in a little town of Cardiff, California, which I think our moderator at one point lived in. From there, I graduated high school there. I went to school at Fresno State, where Brad is from, so I feel like some camaraderie on this little forum here. Graduated with a communications degree in 1984. Went back to my hometown in San Diego County, started a business there, started a family. And then, come around 2004, decided to move my family out of the craziness of Southern California and up to beautiful Brookings, Oregon. So we've been here 16 years, raised four kids up here. The oldest is 30 now, living in Texas. The youngest is 17, still at home for counting the months. But yeah, so we moved here and have really enjoyed living here. Continued the business out of my home, bought a home big enough to operate a business out of. Volunteered for virtually the whole time we've been here. Assisted nonprofits, just had a real busy life. And with COVID, my travel business is what I do. COVID has definitely put a crimp in that business. And I agree with Brad, you know, the situation in the world, especially as regarding law enforcement, is a big deal, and I'm very concerned about that. One of the reasons I moved here was because it was a safe, clean environment for families, and I want to see that continue. So that's one of the major reasons that I'm running, is supporting law enforcement. I get very concerned when I see people online or even marching to the street in a rally saying "defund the police" and trying to restructure that. I'm a big supporter of law enforcement. It's my number-one campaign issue, is let's keep Brookings Police healthy, fully funded, fully functional, fully prepared for any contingency that might happen. Also, I feel very strongly about supporting local businesses. I want to see an environment where they can succeed, where they can... They can, well, a healthy community needs healthy businesses, and I just see that as an essential for our community. So as a City Councilor, I want to support local businesses. Also, I see a real important issue. We have big issues in this community, which are transportation, affordable housing, healthcare, things that require more involvement than just our own little town of 6,000 people. So part of my campaign is about fostering regional cooperation with the county, with other communities within our region, even down in Del Norte County, trying to put together workable solutions for the things that we would really like to see happen in our town and in our region.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're going into the question and answer portion of the forum. Questions collected from the public and League members have been screened by the Voter Service co-chairs for duplications. Each candidate running for the same office will be given an opportunity to answer that question. We'll now present the questions that have been submitted for answers. Again, candidates, you will have one and a half minutes to respond. So what I'm going to do is I am going to be asking the questions in rotating order, and starting with the first question, I'm going to start with you, Brad, since you're the incumbent here, and then I'm going to have your opponent Anthony answer the same question, and then Diane, and then Ed. So here's the question. The first question is, what are your thoughts about the city developing an indoor swimming pool? Brad?
So, an indoor swim pool has been discussed, and I would certainly be all for that. I think it'd be a great asset to the community. The issues would be how it would be funded and where it would go. We have had some discussions about maybe covering the current pool that we have. One of the problems in Brookings is there's not a lot of land that we're able to develop. We don't have a lot of property available for those types of projects. It has been discussed. I would certainly be supportive of it if we could perhaps get some private funding and also look at matching some funding from the city if we were capable of doing that. But yeah, I'm all for it. I think it would be a big benefit to our community. I think it would be great for kids as well, and I think it would definitely get a lot of use here.
Okay, thank you. Anthony?
Well, I don't mean to parrot Brad, but I also happen to agree that it would be nice to have one in the community. I really think that they should be covering the existing one that we have, at least for right now. But if funding can be allocated or received from the public as a joint venture or something similar along those lines, I think it would be a benefit, and I think that if we could just find a place to actually put one, it needs to be done.
Okay, thank you. Diana?
Yeah, I'm a really big proponent of children learning at a young age. I think statistics show if children don't learn to swim by third grade, they often don't ever learn to swim. And one of the reasons why I enjoy the YMCA so much in Medford is because they had such a huge variety of swim lessons there. So all of my kids learned to swim at a young age. I do know that our pool offers swim lessons, and so I support an indoor pool for many reasons, especially considering our climate over here. And I would think that with public-private partnerships, that an indoor pool, you know, I understand the lack of land and the availability. So I would think that with a public-private partnership, land would become available in that way through private partnerships, and also building what we already have into an indoor pool may also be an option as well.
Okay, thank you. Ed?
Yeah, that's the big key, is that partnership that you've been talking about. Maintaining a pool is not a cheap thing to do. Maintaining a pool facility is even more expensive. I know the pool that we have now, it's only open during the summer. That's a net drain on the city budget, but people are happy to do it because we're doing something good for the community. When you get to a new building and a new pool, that's going to be a major budget issue. So it would have to be funded long-term outside the city. I don't think the city wants to spend a whole million dollars to build a pool and keep it supported at, you know, $3,000,000, $4,000,000 a year. I don't think we could get support from that, from the voters, but it would be a nice thing to have if it was privately funded.
Okay, thank you. All right, the second question I have for the candidates, and let's go do it this way. Let's just work backwards, and I'm going to get you up again, and then to Diana, and then to Anthony, and then to Brad. So this is the question. Are you aware that the city provides no funding for the Activity Center, also known as the Senior Center? What is your feeling about having the city provide some financial support to it?
Well, of course, we could, of course, we could provide more funding for a lot more organizations, a lot of nonprofit organizations. That's always an option. But my view is that the city is best served by doing a few things really, really well, and that's police protection, that's fire protection, that's provide clean water, provide good sewage, and infrastructure, good roads, things like that. So most, I mean, I've worked a lot in the nonprofit organization, nonprofit groups, and like you have, Georgia. Not very many are supported by municipalities. So I wouldn't necessarily be against it, but I think we have to be careful when we're supporting private nonprofits. We don't want to open the door and have everybody coming to the city for their funding. Nonprofits are expected to get their own money. I am a president of a nonprofit educational organization. We don't come to the city for money. We go out, and we raise it, and we promote ourselves, and I think that's the way that works best.
Okay, thank you. Diana?
Yeah, I also agree that nonprofits do have different pots of money than cities have available to them, and it does make sense to reach out in that capacity. I think if there was a long-term sustainable plan that the council was in agreement on, using, you know, funding that isn't necessarily available for everybody, but like the marijuana tax revenue or something of that nature that has more flexibility. I think if there was a long-term sustainable plan, and there was a huge push behind that, especially in a community with an aged population that we have, I could certainly see voting for that if the council came together on that kind of a decision.
Okay, thank you. Anthony, you and your friend.
Yeah, I need Brad to help me trade my dog. But anyway, I happen to be against the city helping to fund any nonprofit organization. The point of a nonprofit organization is to fund itself. And I understand that we have a heavy senior citizen population in the city, but that's best served with proper law enforcement and the services that are already provided by the city.
Okay, thank you. Brad?
So yes, I am aware that the city does not provide funding for the Senior Center. We haven't had any recent discussions about providing any funding to the Senior Center, and I'm currently not aware of a circumstance where we are capable or in a position to reallocate money in that direction. It doesn't mean, however, that in the future, you know, there may be an opportunity to partner in that arena as well. But right now, in the current state of the city, the funding isn't currently available.
Thank you. Now, I have a few individual questions, and the first one I have is going to be for Diana Cooper. And the question for you, Diana, is can you identify the small changes you would like to make that would offset developer costs within the city in order to increase building projects?
Yeah, so I mean, the first step I see on City Council is meeting with local developers to determine which of those, you know, which of our city policies are restricting that growth. And that's typically the way I've seen it done. We do have some, I know we have some system development charge fees that can be delayed until or offset, but delayed until occupancy for low-income housing projects. And this is kind of one area that is sort of a small change that can, you know, may not affect the city too much fiscally, especially, you know, when they're getting that funding back. But it does promote the growth that we would need. That's just kind of one small change. There's many more. I'm not sure which of those are applicable to Brookings at the moment, and so that's why I think that there would need to be some sort of collaboration with local developers, especially around some of the specifics that I've heard from Medford and Ashland City Councils and Eagle Point. So that's...
Okay. Ed, did you want to respond to that question or pass?
I can only say that I have spoken to Janelle Howard, the city manager, about the fees. They seem to be in line with other cities. You know, there's always some negotiation that can go on with a major development. But the only major development we can really see on the horizon is the Borax project. When that opens up, then there's going to be some, you know, some land, and there'll be a heavy negotiation on land use. But I don't know that there's any room right now to mess too much with the SDCs. So something you can always talk about, something you can work on, but nothing I would say to lay out right now, here's what we're going to do. I don't think a City Council person can do that.
Okay, thank you. The next question, Ashley, is for you, Ed, now. And the question is, lawbreakers should be encouraged to leave. How should Brookings help a lawbreaker to leave? And what policies do you plan to put in place to ensure they do not come back?
Well, I'm not sure I understand the question. Lawbreakers, people that break the law are usually, you know, they either are cited or they're taken off to jail. So I'm not sure I really understand the question.
Okay, it looked like it was a quote somehow. I'm not sure why. Lawbreakers should be encouraged to leave? I guess that was not a quote of yours, or?
I, yeah, I don't know. A lawbreaker, you know, if you're breaking the law, then, you know, you should be cited, I would think. I mean, if I break the law, run a stoplight or something, I don't think anybody's going to let me, you know, want me out of town. But if I commit a major crime, I think I'm probably going to be invited to go spend a night in Gold Beach.
Okay, yeah. Anyway, I'm not sure. It was just one of the questions that was addressed to you. Diana, did you want to respond to that at all?
No, I think that was sort of an interesting question, and I think Ed's exactly right. We already have systems in place to deal with these issues with law enforcement, and we have a wonderful law enforcement system here, so I can't imagine there being any other answer.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have another individual question, and this is for Anthony Bond. Anthony, from your perspective, what are the needs of the homeless population in Brookings and why?
The needs of the homeless population in Brookings? From my perspective, a lot of it needs to be, let me see, how do I put this? We need to discourage the transient population that's coming up here in the summertime. And by discouraging, I mean enforcing the laws that we already have in place in recognition of the Boise decision. But as far as the actual needs of the homeless population, honestly, I'm not interested. I'm not at this particular point in time. I'm more interested in removing the homeless population from Brooklyn.
Okay. Brad, did you want to respond to that question as well?
Sure, I will. So the needs of the homeless community right now are addiction counseling, mental health, mental health support, and also facilitating those who are financially distressed, that, you know, getting them into a situation where they can get a job. that, uh, you know, getting them into a situation where they can get a job and facilitating that. That's why I'm a big proponent of the Community Resource Officer position and partnering up with some of our advocacy groups, so we can get that officer to connect um those resources to the specific people that need them. And um, and then either either that or get those people to the resources that they need. And by doing that, I think it will, I think it will help uh reduce the uh the current homeless population.
Great. Thank you. So the next question is is sort of in a similar vein. And what I'll do then is go ahead and have you Diana, um, answer the question. And then I'll have Ed follow and uh we'll have Brad and then Anthony. And the question is, what, if anything, should the city do to provide shelter, food, healthcare, or other services for the unhoused?
You said shelter, food, what was the rest of the question?
Healthcare or other services for the unhoused.
So I can probably speak more more directly to the shelter. I don't know that there's necessarily a lot that the city itself can do to provide this other than um, you know, when, when the organizations come together with the funding and the the appropriate, you know, manpower, you know, the city can can, I don't know if you guys can see me very well, it says my connection's unstable. Um, the city can come together with those organizations like Saint Timothy's and the Task Force and the Curry Homeless Coalition um to to better understand, I guess, how they can support the project moving forward, especially when it comes to like conditional use permits or special use permits uh for buildings in town that may be used as a shelter. Uh, they've already done uh quite a bit with allowing the churches to open um and and allow for the free person parking. I don't know that they can necessarily do any more in that area. Uh, that's sort of an individual private decision with the churches. Um, when it comes to food and healthcare and things like that, um, and even childcare, I wanna throw that in there. There are, there are a lot of things that the city can do. The city of Medford provided a hundred thousand dollars through their, actually through their marijuana tax program to help with these programs. So there are, there is a lot that the city can do to help provide.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ed, would you like to answer the question? Would you?
Yeah, you know. Uh, no, I just basically uh uh about the homeless or unhoused is a generic term. I don't really like that because really the homeless have only one thing in common, they don't have a home. Uh, and we shouldn't really lump everybody into that same basket, that same category. Some we can help and some really don't want help. Diana has requested that the city open up parks and public spaces to homeless camping. I think that's the wrong approach. I disagree with that. Brookings residents and businesses have a lot of compassion when I've been talking to them, but they don't want homeless camping any more than they're seeing it now. Taxpayers spend four hundred and forty thousand dollars a year maintaining our parks and they don't want a tent city uh as part of our of our environment, our park environment. Local businesses and residents are tired of the transient drug users seem to have no regard for the community. And I think if we really wanna be compassionate to people who have the most need, we need to admit that many people are better served by going elsewhere, like Diana was. When she got help over in Jackson County, keeping them in Brookings is not necessarily the most compassionate thing we can do. Uh, that being said, I would support regional cooperation again with uh with the county, with other communities in our region to um to meet some of the needs that can be met without going to Coos Bay, Grants Pass, Medford, or elsewhere.
Okay, thank you. Brad.
So I, this is obviously a a very hot topic in our community and it's something that the city council, current city council talks about on a regular basis. And and I don't feel that the city should be paying for um a a homeless camp. However, that being said, um, I talked to many people in the community and uh like Ed said, they're I personally am compassionate as well, but um it's a, this is a very divided uh topic. Half of the community very much feels like um the homeless take advantage of of our community and that they um, they're upset with the way the community is being treated. The other half, they wanna be compassionate and they want to um, you know, they wanna provide help. So push come to shove on this issue, uh, I I would say put it up to the voters. Um, if if uh if the voters wanna vote for a homeless camp, then um it should be their prerogative. They should be able to vote for that. And if they, and if the community votes no, then we're done talking about it and we move on.
Okay. Thank you. Anthony, and uh, and could you uh mute yourself?
Oh, okay. Along what Brad and Ed both discussed and Diana, I have a lot of respect for the work that you do, but understand this, in my house, I have now had an average of three incidents since two thousand thirteen with homeless people walking about my property threatening the people living in my home. Um, I've had weapons pulled on me. I've had individuals fighting in my front yard. I, just a week ago, we had a fire in front of my house um because they decided they wanted to have a campfire in the rain. Um, I don't have a problem with the homeless people per se. I have a problem with the violence that comes along with them. Uh, the nudity downtown. And specifically, I had an individual who decided to expose himself and urinate in front of me in the drive-through at Burger King. I mean, this is getting out of hand. The homeless situation is out of hand. And it's to a point now where obviously we do not have mental health capacity here for these people here in the city of Brookings. We're not going to have it because that's not the nature of our community. And they need to be moved up. Yeah, not putting them in parks, not putting them in ci- uh city properties, state properties, they just need to be moved up.
Okay, thank you. Um, for the next question, I'm actually gonna have uh begin uh answering. And then I'm gonna jump to Diana and then I'm gonna have Ed and then I'm gonna have Brad. So the question I have is, how is the city planning for post-disaster resiliency? Fire, earthquake, major storms? Anthony.
So just going off the last city council meeting, we were dealing with, uh, well, the city council was dealing with an issue with emergency uh preparedness and messaging from the radio station on the local Brookings tower. And the general consensus that I got from the council was, yes, they extended their lease out on that tower for another year. Um, but in five years, they had yet to accomplish the ability to simply transmit an emergency message to the population. There's a whole other issue with political bias on the radio and how many people are actually listening to it. And regardless of that, it had not been attended to. I will honestly need to review the emergency plans for the city that they actually have in place. Um, but just on the basis of that one thing, I say there needs to be a full review from top to bottom with the city uh on their responses to emergency situations.
Okay, thank you. Diana.
Yeah, uh, I was also, I was at that city council meeting and did hear um that there, you know, after one year that uh KCIW will be taking, removing the tower or removing the um it off of the tower, I should say. So I, I do, I do not know what the um city's emergency management plan is um in the event of a fire here or another, you know, a a different kind of emergency. Yeah, I can say that I I haven't read an emergency management plan, so I'm not sure.
Okay. Um, Ed.
Yeah, I'm on the same boat. I haven't, I haven't read it either. I'd say it's it's really an important issue. And uh, you know, I've been here through the tsunami. Uh, I've been here through uh the Cheko bar fire. And uh neither of those had a huge impact and loss of life and loss of property within the city. But I agree that it should be reviewed, it should be looked at, um, that we need to have a plan. I'm sure we do. Brad's up next, maybe he can uh tell us more about it, but I have not spent the time to really see where we are on that issue.
Okay, thank you. Brad.
So the, the, the state of Oregon and uh Curry County uh have designated people that are in those positions. Um, and basically, the city of Brookings is gonna follow that emergency plan. But one of the things that I wanna, I I wanna share with you that I plan on doing uh when I'm elected is uh one of the first things I'm going to do is make a motion to create a liaison between the Brookings City Council and the county of Curry. And I also wanna extend that liaison uh position to Gold Beach and Port Orford. And I'm gonna volunteer for that position. Uh, I think I've created enough relationships with our county leaders that um that I can sit in a room with them and um we can, we can exchange ideas. And when we have an emergency, um, it would be nice to know what their expectations are, what their plans are, and it would be nice for them to know what ours are. I don't think the county should tell the city what to do, and I don't think the city should tell the county what to do. But I do feel that if the city can work with the county, we can have a safer community from that.
Okay, thank you. So um for this next question, uh, let's go ahead and uh, Ed, I'll have you go first. And then Anthony, um, Brad and Diana. Okay? So the question is, the Brookings Housing Needs Assessment carried out by South Coast Development Council, Inc., and submitted in October twenty seventeen, stated that four hundred and fifty-two additional subsidized rental units uh were needed within the study area. How is Brookings Harbor coming with that? What has been done since twenty seventeen and what is going to be done in the future? Oh, you're on mute now, sorry.
I can't speak to the assessment or to what the, what the city's, um, you know, city's done on that. I can't speak to the affordable housing issue. And it's a tough, tough situation because it it affects both working-class residents and businesses that employ them. And as far as I see, there's no quick, easy solution for that. I think uh we all realize that not everyone who lives in a high land value community, anybody that works in a high land community, uh, land value community can actually afford to live in that same community. That's rather simple economics. In other places that I've lived, you know, people that, you know, live in the resort areas can live there and the people that work there commute from somewhere else. That's not unusual. That's the way it is uh all over the world. I did talk recently to a local land developer in uh in Dawson Track and he expressed that, you know, it all has to pencil out. You know, investments have to pencil out. And when you have high land values and you have uh high building costs, unless you have subsidies um from governments or other other entities, uh, it's gonna be really hard to build affordable housing here. And there's not much room left. Janelle Howard, the city manager, told me until Borax is developed, it's just not going to be easy. So again, regional cooperation where land is perhaps cheaper, uh, maybe in Gold Beach in the county, that might be the best approach to go to, to try to work together to get more affordable housing for the Brookings area.
Thank you. Anthony.
Yeah, I don't uh really have much to say on this exact subject, other than I happen to believe in the market forces. And bottom line is, right now, Brookings is a high-value, high-property value area. And, you know, not everybody can live there and it's that simple. And, you know, if I probably would not have moved here had it been in any other way. And because of that, uh, I honestly have no intention of uh voting in anything that would devalue our property values or um make this more affordable housing quote thing. Uh, let the market deal with it.
Thank you. Brad.
So when you uh, when you step into the city council seat, there's a big learning curve when you do that. And I think there's also a a lot of misperception about what a city council member can affect and not affect. And sure, there, there is absolutely a need for affordable housing in our community. Uh, it would allow uh nurses and police officers and other, you know, first responder folks to have, you know, affordable places to live as well. But the reality is, as a city council member, um, I'm, there's really limited things that that I can do to help that. And part of it is, there is not a lot of land to be developed within the city limits. Now, the county does have uh accessible areas. And uh it is possible that some of those areas could eventually develop into uh affordable housing opportunities. And there may be a situation uh that could be explored where uh the city could do some partnering with um with the county. Uh, and again, I go back to that liaison position I'd like to uh uh create and be part of. Um, that, you know, those would be discussions that uh we'd be having within that position.
Okay. Thank you. Diana.
Yeah, so I actually have very thoroughly read that, that needs assessment um and had some follow-up with that. We, we haven't done anything that I'm aware of with that assessment yet on a city or county level. Um, there is some movement more on county and there is definitely more land um available on county, county level. So uh, but what I will say is that the development of multifamily housing units is is our best uh here in Brookings for expanding housing uh due to the fact that, first of all, it tends to be cheaper uh to construct. And so it's cheaper to rent. One of the things that uh I try to push is the census. I hope everybody here did their census. And um, and then, of course, our, to get our HUD funding, the point-in-time count that we do every January, that we'll do again here in Brookings. Um, and the reason why the census and this point-in-time count is so important is because we typically get a lot of um participation from uh people who have higher incomes. And so due to that, our um, our funding here in Curry County is very low because we don't have, we don't, we can't create a picture of that need on a state level and on a federal level. So the census is really important, uh, the point-in-time count is really important. And also, um, cities can, and this is a little bit outside of housing, but cities can support childcare efforts um to assist working families, so they're able to, either two-parent, two-parents working or one-parent working and and have that dedication so that they can pay their rent.
Okay, thank you. All right. I think for the next round of questions, we're gonna go back and Brad, I'm gonna have you answer Anthony, Diana and Ed. And uh, this question is, when Borax Rio Tinto developed the Lone Ranch subdivision, uh, do you see risk of erosion due to the clearing of that large site? What things can be done to minimize those risks?
Well, there's, there's always risk. And um I know in Dawson Track right now, um, on the uh, the oceanfront properties there, there is some erosion issues with some of those properties. That, that is, that is part of the uh, part of the environment where we live. Uh, those, those types of things are going to happen. So in in terms of uh risk uh with that particular project, the uh, the project developers are gonna have to really show some, some uh critical evidence of um mechanisms that they're willing to put in place, that they're willing to pay for to ensure that uh that is uh at a, at a, at a very minimum. Uh, with the understanding that, you know, that those things are, those things happen here in this environment.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Anthony.
And to me, that it's a pretty simple process. They either provide an appropriate erosion control measures. And obviously, they'll have to have engineers approve it. But I'm not necessarily concerned with the erosion control of the project itself, as long as those measures are enforced. And to be honest with you, with the, the current environment, I have no concerns over that being enforced.
Okay. Thank you. Diana.
I actually agree with both of them, but I, I do think that uh we should have a s- a strong enforcement on those because, I mean, we're talking about, you know, land and that we've all kind of, well, I don't know about you guys, but that we've grown up with and that we've enjoyed and we wanna keep the land healthy. And so I do think that And so I do think that those, you know, that those are in place for a reason and that they should be strictly followed up with. And so, but we do have a lot of risk here in Curry County. There's a lot of salt in the air. There's a lot of erosion everywhere, so, um, but enough to mitigate that, the, the bigger risks so that we don't run into issues down the road and with environmental impacts.
Okay, thank you. Ed?
Yeah, it was funny. I was talking to, uh, Bob Gardner down in Oxford Street today and his family has lived here for five generations and they've been involved in road construction and landslides and, you know, all kinds of nightmares of over the generations, uh, things that happened in Curry County. All I can say is we need, uh, or Borax needs to hire some really, really good engineers. It's, it's going to be a challenge, um, but I'm confident good engineering can solve it. As long as you don't skimp there, I think we'll be okay.
Okay, thank you. For the next round of question or actually the next question, I should say, uh, why don't we have, uh, Anthony, why don't you go first? And then Brad? And did I redo this? Order, let's, I'm sorry, Anthony, Ed, Diane, and then Brad. How's that? Okay. Over the past six months, there have been and continue to be Black Lives Back, Black Lives Matter protests around the country. Can you identify ways in which shifting certain responsibilities of the police in our community to other agencies along with the matching funds for those responsibilities would be beneficial to our homeless, at-risk, low-income populations? Oh. You're, you're still muted. I'm not hearing you.
Let's try it that way.
Sounds good.
Okay. Can you repeat this question again?
Okay, sure. Over the past six months, there have been and continue to be Black Lives Matter protests around the country. Can you identify ways in which shifting certain responsibilities of the police in our community to other agencies along with the matching funds for those responsibilities would be beneficial to our homeless, at-risk or low-income populations?
Absolutely not. I would not shift anything from our police department as it's currently set up to anyone else. Our police department is, uh, funded to the best of my ability and the best of my knowledge and they do a very fine job at what they do. I don't understand the question as it relates to Black Lives Matter events and the homeless. But neither one of those are concerns that I would consider altering our current police profile on to deal with. The city council voted in and approved a Community Resource Officer and I happen to agree with their assessment on that. And, I mean, essentially I, I really don't understand how that relates to the Black Lives Matter issue.
Okay, thank you. Ed? You're muted.
There, okay. Yeah, it's a, a long disjointed question, but I, um, I would agree with Tony on, on not shifting police funds. If we're going to fund o- other things regarding homeless disadvantaged people, let's do it separately. And that's what we did, uh, when the city council passed, uh, a three dollar, um, surcharge for a community service officer, a community resource officer. And we're going to try that and, uh, and see how that goes. But taking money away from the police, um, at a time when, um, dangers abound. I know in, uh, in Oregon, we have thirty percent more property crime than the national average of the most crime ridden towns or big cities, over ten thousand people in Oregon. A lot of them are in our vicinity, uh, Grants Pass, uh, Roseburg, Coos Bay. Medford is third on the list for high crime rates in, uh, in the state of Oregon. All these places are too close for comfort. And if we think we're immune to that in Brookings, Oregon, I think that's a dangerous, uh, dangerous way to think. I think we need to be prepared for more crime coming here. And the last thing I would want to do is shift funds away from the police department.
Thank you. Diana?
Yeah, so I actually, I work really closely with, uh, Community Resource Officer, interim Community Resource Officer Johnson, um, and Chief McCray, uh, in the work that I do. And I, um, am fortunate enough to be able to have conversations, uh, about this with them. And I will say that, uh, I think that there's definitely an opportunity to, uh, shift further resources, resources that come down the pipe later and that we may need into social services. Uh, you know, I, I definitely made it no secret that, uh, police officers aren't the ones equipped to deal with, uh, social service calls or social service issues, including those related to the homeless. I don't know that I'm necessarily worried about a bunch of, uh, crime coming in. We do have some of that because we are on the one oh one. But as far as the population that we're dealing with now here in Brookings, uh, uh, proper as it stands, we're in desperate need of social services and some of that can be mitigated through funding from the police department. Um, and I don't think that that's, uh, a, a wild, you know, and crazy thought. I think that that's happening all over the country. Um, and we're seeing that happen in a positive manner with the White Bird Clinic. But, you know, social service providers are equipped to deal with long-term. You know, they have the long-term capabilities for case management, which is something that Community Resource Officer doesn't have. Um, and so that is something we can work in tandem with officers like, like I do already now, so.
Okay, thank you. Brad?
So, uh, I, I don't support shifting funding, uh, away from law enforcement and I don't, uh, support defunding of law enforcement here in the city of Brookings. That may be appropriate for other cities, uh, but here in Brookings, I don't support that. And I'll tell you why. We currently have sixteen officers. We have one vacancy and that's not enough. And when I say it's not enough, I want you to understand that we are providing the only law enforcement agency in the county that is twenty-four seven, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. We have a minimum staffing to meet each, each day. And when you factor in sick time, you factor in time off, you factor injured officers, you factor in training time. A lot of times we have one officer working alone at night and we shouldn't be doing that. Uh, we're, we're actually violating standards in the industry, I think, by doing that. I have a couple of ideas that might help to provide additional resources to our department, uh, at a lower cost. One of those ideas is to explore maybe looking at some guys like me, thirty-year-plus guys that, uh, moved here, retired, they have good credentials. Maybe we can hire them on a part-time basis or a contract basis. And what they can do is they can, they can come in, fill some shifts, backfill some shifts. We can get our guys to the training they need and, um, and we'll also, also have more boots on the ground for a, uh, for an emergency or critical incident.
Okay, thank you. So this completes tonight's Zoom Candidates Forum. Thank you. As mentioned earlier, the Candidate Forum recordings will be available on channel one eighty-two, currycountyvoices.com, l w v curry.org, l w v o r dot org, and vote four one one dot org via YouTube. Thanks to those organizations for making them available. And the league thanks you, the candidates, for participating and to the viewers for watching and learning about your candidates. Good night.